Good afternoon. What's up? It's Akid Mel. Welcome. Thank you for stopping. Bye. I want to say hi to some of the people in the chat. We're going to be watching this town hall that happened Friday. I took off a couple of days. So I wasn't here until today. And there's been a lot of interesting news that's come out with regards, just in different stuff like Nina and Lisa being caught, which I'm probably going to do a video on that. And also that freezer where the boy was in a freezer. That was kind of crazy, too. Yeah, let me make sure everything's working good. Do an audio check. And thank you for the likes. Appreciate that. Oh, I gotta give some thanks to-
Medicare options out.
And for the people that are rewatching this, I'll put a timestamp below. So you can know where we start. Amazing. Amazing. So I could only find two videos of this. What's up? How you guys doing? BLM, 757 has the video and Rhoda. And I only saw like some snippets, but they have the full thing. So I put their links in the description. We're gonna watch the clip because, and I don't know why there wasn't any media out there besides these people, like, why didn't anybody else record it? Why wasn't the news there? I don't know. But BLM ends up getting kicked out of that church session. Sup Gloria, Billy, Victoria, Carmen, Amy, Karen, SR. Phoenix Loop, keep running up. What's up? Alright, so let me get us started. We're gonna watch. Oh, let's do this. Canada, what's up? Welcome. Hit the like on the way in. I'd appreciate that. Hopefully notifications are going out.
Good evening, everybody. So thank you again for coming out. The team and I, many of the members of the Hampton Police Division are represented here tonight. We wanted to come out and give everybody our time to ask any questions that you might have related to the Cody Bigsby investigation, what we've done in our attention moving forward, and anything that we can appropriately say. I've said a lot to the Cody Bigsby investigation, what we've done in our attention moving forward, and anything that we can appropriately say. I've said a lot publicly. I've shared information that I think a lot of other police chiefs would not share.
I agree.
Clearly, there are limits to what we can say. The main purpose of tonight, let me thank Pastor King for volunteering to host us tonight, which I really appreciate, and volunteering to be the first in a series of conversations where we can-
The high pitched noise. Do they both have high pitched noise?
I've said a lot.
It's less on this one, huh? Alright, we're gonna have to listen to this one, right? You guys tell me, is it less with this?
Publicly, I've shared-
You hear it a little bit, but it's not as loud with this.
Information that I think a lot of other police chiefs would not share.
Still there.
Clearly, there are limits to what we can say. The main purpose of tonight, one, let me thank Pastor King for volunteering to host us tonight, which I really appreciate, and volunteering to be the first in a series of conversations where we can connect directly with the residents around this issue or any other. I want to recognize my Assistant Chief here, Assistant Chief Gal, who's been with you for a couple of decades and I'm not gonna say you're old, I'm just gonna say you've been with us for a couple of decades. He gave me that look, he was there. Thank you for coming out as well. Just to give you a sense of maybe some of the things that you already know. July, I'm sorry, January 31st of this year at about nine o'clock in the morning and when I first heard about Cody Bigsby. None of us in the Hampton Police Division knew his name prior to that. He's rapidly become all of our child. A four-year-old that goes missing is all of our responsibility and it rapidly became a very intense and emotional investigation. When he was reported missing, within the first two hours, the team that you see assembled here contacted the FBI, got all the other resources that we need to investigate this case, as if it was our child. We had drones up in the air. We had airplanes searching. We had people on foot. We've searched several bodies of water throughout the course of this investigation.
Keeping up with the latest COVID news and guidance can be overwhelming. That's why we're here to help you distinguish between what's true and false. Have something you want.
Sorry about that. Had an article open.
Stop doing some of the work that we normally would be doing because we prioritize the work around this child. It has been a non-stop effort to find him, bring him home, bring justice to his life. I think most of us understand, I've been in this business a long time. I've been in policing for 28 years. And throughout the course of my career, I've been involved in a number of investigations, a number of incidents that become emotionally intense and somewhat controversial. As you know, throughout the course of this investigation, we found internally that we didn't do everything the way that it needed to be done. Hopefully you see by the way that we responded to our own mistake, that this is who we are. That there have been a number of people who, you know, I'll say this, not everybody within the Hampton Police Division is happy that I chose to go in front of cameras and say, "We messed up." But that's okay. You know, when they have their own police department, they can run it however they want to. In ours, we will be transparent with our mistakes. You, when you have an organization of three or 400 people and you're engaged in the hardest work that there is to do in society, you will run into the inevitable collision course with the fallibility of human beings. That's just the way it's gonna work. What we can hope for is an organization that is, that has enough integrity and is responsible enough to admit the challenges, admit the shortcomings, and let you know what we're going to do moving forward. So we found out a couple of weeks into the investigation that the way that the investigation was handled, the way a particular interview was handled was inappropriate. I'm not gonna rehash all of the details. I'm sure most of us know. But we quickly recovered from that. And the mistakes that were made didn't jeopardize the charges that were filed. We looked at 100 hours of video. And when I say we looked at 100 hours of video, I mean, we looked at the video and everybody assembled knew I was not going to be put in a position of having to apologize for anything else. So we were looking at it and we were studying it and we collectively made sure we knew exactly what happened before we moved forward. Once we got past that, we developed a whole team of folks that are 100% of the time responsible for figuring out what happened in this case. As I said, I've been in this business 28 years. I've been associated with a number of investigations, double homicide, triple homicide. I've never put more resources into a case than I put into this one. Never in my career. This child deserves it. I can tell you that the thought, a number of people have had a thought, what can I do? A number of people have reached out and wanted to search and have wanted to, you know, find out ways that they could be useful, which is encouraging. And I think the reality moving forward is we have to recognize that there are other four-year-old kids out there that don't have the support systems in their life that would have saved them in the first place. Some of the saddest moments of this investigation have involved seeing deeply into this child's life. Seeing how it could be that we're still not sure when the last time somebody saw this child helping and talking and playing. We still don't know. The challenge moving forward is not only are we going to have this be the event that causes all of us to function in a way that we weren't functioning in this child's life, where we're paying attention to whether or not your neighbor seems to be doing what your neighbor should be doing and whether or not we're actually helping where we could be helping. I think that some of our frustrations, just speaking on behalf of the dozens and dozens of people who in my organization that have worked extremely hard to figure out what happened. Part of the frustration is when you do this work and you get caught up in conversations that can make it even more difficult than it is. I've raised several four-year-olds as have most of the people on the team. Most of us have kids. And any notion that we didn't bring our best every single day, that we didn't work as long and as hard as we could, and any notion that we failed to bring any resource that would have brought this child home is hurtful. Policing is a career that not only is difficult intellectually, it is difficult emotionally. When every single day you are up close to the most traumatic moments in other people's lives, vicariously, you carry that with you throughout your career. And so when you wake up in the morning at whatever ungodly hour you need to wake up to be at the briefing, and the first thing that enters your mind is, what happened to this job? What happened to this job? When you look at your own files and you see his face and you recognize this face looks like my face at four years old. This face looks like my kid at four. It looks like my nephew. When that is the first thing that you encounter when you wake up and then your entire existence for weeks and weeks is looking deeply into the community, looking deeply into this child's life, looking deeply into anything that could help, it is traumatic. Now, that's not, that is not to prioritize what we deal with because it is our choice. It's not to prioritize what we deal with, but it is, I want to try to explain to you the lived experience of management, of leading this type of investigation. And not just this one. In the midst of Cody Bigsby, the city of Hampton didn't stop. It didn't stop. There were still people who lost their lives in the midst of Cody Bigsby. There were still-
Are we okay? I disconnected. My connection dropped for a second. Dropped and reconnected. Okay, I think we're fine. If you guys could hit like, I'd appreciate it, man. Really helps out with the algorithm. This video was released Friday, so it's technically old news, but I haven't watched it yet. Also, I just want to say quick thank you to some of the PayPals. I don't often check PayPal, but thank you Diana, Elizabeth, Michelle, Carla, and Christine. Appreciate that. And also, I'll get the cash apps in a second.
To deal with. There was still the rest of the responsibilities that are there. All of the things that you need us to do. The enormity of this work, the challenge compounds itself when you recognize we're not free to just make up what may have happened to Cody Bigsby. We're not free to do that. This is a great country. It is beautiful that when you are not actually responsible for bringing justice, you are free to say, you know, maybe a relative snatched him out of his home. You're free to say that. You're free to imply maybe the Hampton Police Division doesn't really care about missing kids. You're free to imply, but it is deeply, deeply untrue. We are here tonight to say to you, without the mediation of the news media, to say to you directly, we are committed to doing whatever it takes, not just with this investigation, but as a matter of what we do every single day. If you could look into how this organization functions, you would know that we look very deeply into problems, that we hold ourselves accountable for the work that we do, that I am completely intolerant of mediocre performance. I will challenge any performance that doesn't meet the standard that we're looking for, in particular in an investigation like this. The reason why-
I think they are gonna speak later. BLM ends up getting kicked out. Have you done, I'm seeing old stuff. I haven't done an update on Justin. I want to this week. There's a couple of stories I gotta do updates on. Think I'm gonna do them in the form of short videos.
We ultimately identify our own shortcomings is because we look hard at our work. We look it right in the face. And we look right in the face of our work in a way that is uncompromising. Recognizing in a way that is, if you did your best but it falls short, it still fell short. And once we recognize that there's more that we could do or more that could have been done, we quickly do the things that need to be done. And this has continued. This has been our process every single day. We started out, week one, with, you know, many of you may saw our our command vehicle out there and we assembled every single morning.
Thanks, Jennifer.
And we met at least twice a day. We still meet at least once a day. But we met at least twice a day, sometimes three times. You know, you never know when you might need an extra conversation with the team. Each one of those conversations was organized, was intense, was intentional. We were holding ourselves responsible for doing this. We are still very much interested in this work. More than anything in my career, I'll tell you this. I recently, a bunch of people that know me found out before I did. I was on the cover of Police Chief Magazine. And it was totally by accident. It's like somebody did a Google search and somehow I got caught up in this Google search. But the picture on the cover of Police Chief Magazine was me in 2010. I was a deputy chief at that point. And I was having a meeting like this. It was a community meeting about a homicide in my first police department. And it reminded me that the weakness in our collective approach is we will come out when there's a problem. But we need to come out when there's not a problem. We need to be in relationship with each other when everything went exactly the way it was supposed to.
Let me see if I can play some of this one. So that's Rhoda. I put the links on both of these pages. These are the only two that I see with the full video. Rhoda Young, reporting live. BLM. Let me see if he still has the hissing here. Or I just wanna mix up the beat a little bit.
So the community's in and out for them. The picture from 2010 is this. It is the collective outrage that we all feel when the community is failed. When we all come together because we're looking for what happened. And we're, we grasp for an answer to the question, what happened? What could have saved Willie Taneo's life?
Thank you, Charisma.
What could we have done before Cody Bigsby went missing? To ensure he lived a better life? What could we have done? That meeting was like this one. And seeing sort of, just by chance, looking back at 2010 and being reminded of the circle that policing and public safety turns out to be. And I think it's absolutely appropriate that we do come out at times like this because if a missing four-year-old doesn't bring you out, what will bring you out? What will bring you out of the house if you don't come? I don't know why it's not full. Because I haven't stopped thinking about it since the day I heard about it. Since the day that the Assistant Chief said, no, this is not the same. He said, "It's not the same. This is different. Something's wrong." It is not, it is not protocol. Within two hours of an investigation call, the FBI, we are a fully functioning police agency. We have all the resources that we need. We know what we're doing. I've been in this business a long time. I know what I'm doing. We called the FBI because it was another resource. Because we knew it was something different. We had planes up because it was another resource. We knew it was something different. We reached out to the public. And that has continued.
No, I haven't.
We look at every bit of evidence throughout the entire investigation.
No, you haven't.
We've received calls. Now, again, here's just how it works in the business. I'm not mad. We've received calls from people who say, "I'm intuitive. I know exactly where you need to look." We've had calls from people that say that they read TVs and whatever else. We may not follow all those reads, but the people who call and say they legitimately think we should check something, we check. As it stands now, I have a full-time captain responsible for the investigation, a lieutenant, three sergeants, and two lead detectives. I promise you-
We reported bones three days ago to say on investigation.
You don't know of another investigation that has that many resources put into it. You do not know of another investigation. We get the call on that first day and we are literally non-stop since that, since that point. Policing is at a place where it doesn't enjoy the benefit of the doubt, I'll say, as it once did. And that is for good reason. I am no apologist for the police. I'm just not. I'm a realist as it comes to our shortcomings. In fact, you know that if I see something wrong, I will say it. And I will say, I'll stand up and I'll say, I can promise you that what we've done throughout the course of this investigation has entailed.
It's borderline in church. Oh, my God.
And the things that we didn't do is because we either didn't need to do them or we could not do them for one reason or none. The limitations that we've experienced with this investigation have involved the conscious choice, choices of adults to not tell us things. Right? That's what we need to confront. What I believe that we need to confront is not, did we miss something? Because I promise you, we didn't miss anything. We need to confront the reality of this type of investigation. The limiting factor is not what we missed. The limiting factor is, involves the conscious choices of adults in disclosing what they know. I've had a number of people who have reached out and said, "Hey, would you like us to search here and there? Chief, can you give us more direction?" I could give you more direction if the people who said they love Cody Bigsby gave us more direction.
Hmm, okay, okay.
That's what our limitation is. The people that say we lack transparency, you should probably check YouTube and see what I actually said. Because if anything, I said too much. The limitation in this case has been a failure of the people who loved this child to come forward with what they know in clear and unambiguous ways.
Thank you for the like button.
If we had that information, the minute that we have that information, we will act on it. We've been investigating to some degree with our hands over our eyes. Now, I don't apologize for, I'm sorry. I don't make excuses for the mistakes that we made. But I will ask you to just recognize how badly we want to bring this child home. This wasn't, we're going after a shoplifter. This wasn't, we're trying to recover a stolen car. This was us bringing every bit of what we know to work every single day to bring this child home. I've looked at the time cards of investigators that have worked 40 hours straight. investigators that have worked forty hours straight. We are all in a hundred percent. We're all in a hundred percent. And we will continue to be in a hundred percent. And we will continue to bring everything that we can to bring anybody justice when it comes to our attention. Without, take any questions to this.
So, interesting. What I say about the chief, and then I think this is where, at some point here, things are going to get kind of hot. But this guy really does communicate a lot. However you might feel about him, a lot of these chiefs aren't talking like this, you know? But at the same time, you know what they say, keep explaining yourself, explaining yourself. Sometimes you just do it, don't explain yourself, they say, right? But most of this is everything we already knew. There's nothing really new. I guess it's just the community trying to talk to the community.
Let's make sure that we be kind.
Maybe we'll switch back to the other one.
Peace and blessings to all. Thank y'all for putting together this great space here in this house of God.
All right, let me see something. There he is. We got a better angle.
At the time parts of the state of the nation forests. Let's make sure that we be kind.
Oh, peace and blessings to all. Thank y'all for putting together this great space here in this house of God. My name is Farah Jones. I'm president of the Black Lives Matter 757. And we have been on the ground voluntarily since this broke with no timestamps to be paid for. So I have a few questions. I try to rectify our history and shut us down. So the first question is, was there an attempt made to issue an Amber Alert to the state police? Or because of what you verbalized here today, because of a certain hens, you, that the option of the child actually wanted it off? We found out from citizens that there are a lot of pedophiles in the surrounding neighborhoods. Was any of that investigated? Or are all the days in the basket of whatever evidence that there is to be found rest in the house where Cody Bigspeed was reported missing? Hey, Cody's family has shut out of this entire process? And are they regularly updated? Again, you've judged this family based off of your words today? And you sit up here and really sit in the house of God, if something disrevered or bad happens to the family, again, alluding to the fact that you already know what may or may not happen? Why weren't there only fifty volunteers allowed to search? And why didn't you call us back? I still have the text messages of you ignoring, let's try and get a contact with you this entire time. We've been reaching out to you. I had your cell phone number. We had numerous conversations prior to Cody going missing. And then when Cody went missing, you couldn't contact me. I even contacted you about your officer that got smacked in the head with a baseball bat and was asking about their well-being. Got the receipts for that as well. There was no problem. There was no issue having a conversation with them, but now it is. Why won't the mayor address the public? Same here today. That's great. We're on day twenty-sixth, and this is your city. It's your responsibility to ensure your people comfort and ensure everybody that a four-year-old went missing is your top priority. They voted you in, you work for them. That's how it works. How come the bones were found? As you just said, everything was investigated. We found bones three days ago. And those bones have not been investigated. One more question. On the reason Cody's family isn't here on the front lines is because of you. Cody's family would like to be involved in this, but because of the media and law enforcement, y'all have scared you off from searching for their brother, their nephew, and their lover. And the community would like to see this.
One question at a time. You know, you asked, we have five questions. You gotta give Chief and the mayor opportunity, I believe, to answer your questions. So, Chief. So I'll address my response to everybody. If it seems reasonable to anybody assembled here that we missed something intentionally, please let me know. But this kind of conversation is exactly what I'm referring to. We've done everything that is possible around this investigation. I have a deep understanding of how to investigate a case like this. This question of an Amber Alert has been asked and answered numerous times. It functions in a way to make you think there's something out there that we should have done and didn't. It is a ludicrous suggestion. The notion that the family has been pushed to the sidelines, does that resonate as resembling truth to anyone? If that is what you think, I'm not sure what you're talking about. You're probably not sure what you're talking about. We need, we, I'm gonna go ahead and finish my response to this. We need all of the information that's available from the people who are close to Cody Bigspeed. It flies in the face of what makes sense to believe we don't want to speak to them.
Did the family, when the family adhered to the investigation from the jump, they wouldn't even pause and they gave you all their devices and y'all comb through all of their devices? Is that not true?
Ooh. Again, the investig-
And what did he say? Did the family not give all their devices and?
Adhered to the investigation from-
We need, we, I'm gonna go ahead and finish my response to this. We need all of the information that's available from the people who are close to Cody Bigspeed. It flies in the face of what makes sense to believe we don't want to speak to them.
Did the family, when the family adhered to the investigation from the jump, they wouldn't even pause and they gave you all their devices and y'all comb through all of their devices? Is that not true?
Ooh. Again, the investigation was conducted in a way that a professional investigation is conducted. We receive a number of devices from the only person that we've been talking to consistently from early on. We've spoken to every single person who's agreed to speak to us around this investigation. Every single person. To believe something else, you know, let's stop and think about it for just a second. I stood in front of TV cameras and admitted something that you still wouldn't know now had I not done it. You still wouldn't know. Do you know how long it would take before those tapes get reviewed? Did you, can-
So this is kind of interesting because he's talking and referring, we talked about this previously on one of the live streams. We know how they admitted that they messed up during the interrogation at some point. He wanted legal counsel and they didn't give it to him. And I was saying, one of the things I was saying was that, well, it was going to come out anyway, so I guess he had to come out and, you know, saying we were looking at it as a good faith thing, but it was going to come out anyway, and it would look worse if he didn't come out and admit to the facts. But he's saying that, if I didn't tell you, you wouldn't have known for a long time, what he's saying. I feel like possibly, but you're still getting ahead of the situation because the lawyer was going to be reviewing all those tapes as well. But that's what he's talking about.
Can you imagine that a single lawyer may have missed the things that I openly disclosed? Right? It is absolutely within the realm of possibility. And even if it was discovered, you wouldn't know it for months and months and months. I stood up and said it because I believe that the police belong to you. We belong to you. This is a public enterprise. And we're working on your behalf. Does it make any sense that the same organization that transparently puts the challenges right out for everybody to see also is choosing not to speak to the four-year-old's family? As if we really don't want to find this child? Not only that, but from the very first day, Chief, Dallop and I told the team, we will investigate this as if somebody snatched this child. We will look at everything that could have indicated a stranger snatched this child. Everything. We will check every sex offender. And by the way, I've been doing this for twenty-eight years. If you think you can tell me something that I don't already know about how to do this, you're delusional. You're delusional. We checked all the sex offenders in the area. We checked every possible location in the immediate vicinity. We did all the things that you would expect us to do.
My actual question, was there an attempt made to issue an Amber Alert? But we talked to chiefs in other cities and you actually have to approach the state police to get it. So the question is, did you actually ask the state police to issue the Amber Alert?
Yes. The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
The answer is yes.
There was a question that was to me about press conference. I will tell you that in my five half-years of being mayor, I've only held one press conference. I think that was two years ago when we had six shootings in seven nights. And we thought there was concern for the citizens to know that that was not normal and that we were going to do everything we could to try and address that. And in the time I've been mayor, we've had a mother and child were missing, actually from Hampton, but they were missing in Newport News. There was no press conference. We had no toddler, no missing. There was no press conference. We had a shooting at Buck Road, I think that was in 2019, in which at least two children were injured. There was no press conference. So doing press conferences because of either injury or missing individuals is not a practice.
I mean, and I'm just, this is a suggestion that when the city is actually on heads, like I said, and people have been searching again, and Camp Cody has been searched for all these days voluntarily, the people like to hear from the individuals running the city, letting them know that things are going to be okay or that they're doing everything in their power. It's just pretty much when everybody was holding his lanes to Trump for not saying this, that, and the third. I'm just saying that it would be, the public likes to hear, especially when a four-year-old missing, and they don't have to worry about their four-year-old going missing if it's not concerning to their life and their future.
Well, I appreciate the question and even your observation on it. But at one time, I did attempt to address the media. From my perspective, I could not address the media because someone was shouting my ear.
Who was that individual?
Good afternoon, guys. I just want to raise some laughter, some smiles, even to try to ask here, would baby Cody been missing? And I want to make sure I reassure each and every one of you guys, I don't think none of us in here is the reason baby Cody's missing. So I would like that we could kind of gather and be more peaceful towards one another because we all are here for the same reason and want to know the way of being of baby Cody or found out what really happened to him. And that's what's most important. Put down the, put down the attacks towards each other. Love our neighbors, you love ourselves. All right, let's start over from the beginning. Let's pick up the pieces. Balls has been dropped, mistakes was made, no one anticipated on baby Cody going missing. We would have never planned for this in a hundred years. There are one of our leaders in our community that's going, going missing. Not just missing. What's so crazy about it? We can't find him. You know? It's a long time for a child to be on. Where's the mother is the question. I know she said to the news that the news told her, don't talk, or her lawyer, I'm sorry, the boy telling her to talk. But it couldn't be nobody in this building that can hold me back from crying and speaking out and begging the public, where's my child? You see, we're mad. We're angry at each other. We should be attacked. And if I ever did anything to anyone in here doing this case that was offensive, please, I'll say my apology. But at the time, at the beginning of this, we getting better. Even with black lives now, even with the chief, even with, even with the mayor, we're all getting better. We're working together. We're learning together. This is not nothing we planned for. Our main goal is to bring baby Cody home. And that's it. And hold whomever responsible accountable for their action. Thank you guys for listening. I love each and every one of you. I'm giving you my.
Nice. So where does it go bad? What happens?
It never happened.
If nobody has any other questions about anything, investigation, if you have questions about anything else in policing, I can answer that.
We do have a search going on tomorrow. We have been searching now for twenty-five days. And we would like to take us out to the city and invite law enforcement, as well as the mayor, anybody interested to meet us at Camp Cody. Camp Cody is a citizen form search team that was put together on the second day when individuals were on the search of Cody, but there was a strict fifty-person letting put on it. And that was another question I did have, where if the question or the concern was that Hampton PD didn't have enough law enforcement to pretty much, I don't want to say big, simple minds or individuals searching, but do you understand if this is a four-year-old searching for and everybody going, just want to die in? Was it possible to contact National Bar or any of the many armed services that are around here during those critical hours? Because the child being reported missing, the first forty-eight hours, we all know, was critical. And that's when the hundreds of people were coming out trying to search. We were able to search on the first day with law enforcement. The second day, myself and others weren't called back. That's how Camp Cody was formed. But how can we make sure that if this were to happen again, we can have that communication with you all and that communication with us where it's like, hey, we understand you have the resources to come out. But it's just hard for me to get rid of elephant in the room because when we had a protest outside the headquarters, there were four vehicles made available. When we had a kids event out at Gollum Park last Saturday, there was four pop cars ready available and they ran us off. Traumatizing kids. We just want to see what the disconnect is. If we're all out here for Cody, we just want to know what we can do to not be shut out of the process when we're all supposed to be in this together.
To, over and over again, to proclaim that there's disconnect and to proclaim that we didn't have the resources that we needed to conduct the investigation just doesn't make it so. We did have the resources. We do have-
I heard that, I think too, that they contacted FBI that same day, I thought. Thought I read that or heard that somewhere.
The resources. We made, let me say it more precisely. I made choices about how those first hours were going to go. I stand by the choices I made in those first hours. We made the right choices. We looked in the places that we needed to look. We searched where we needed to search. We continue to search and investigate.
How come the bones we found three days ago, the bones we found three days ago, how come those bones have still not been investigated to this very moment?
It is simply not true. It is simply not true.
We have no tape.
It is awesome. It is simply not true. There is, there is, there is no evidence that we haven't checked, that we were made aware of.
So I'm lying?
Apparently.
Do I need to pull up the tape right now?
Pull it up.
Because I'm being very serious. We found bones three days ago. You never came. The jackal were there? The jackal were there? The fuck was that? The jackal was found, was found by volunteers. Well, and it took three hours for forensics to come to this. And this is area where the police going to go check. So it's not, it's not a DOL police thing. This is a serious question where we found, I'm telling you, in front of a God, Zion, God, this church, we found bones three days ago. we found bones three days ago. Those bones were called in. The individual who called those in was never met. We had the call on tape, we have the discovery of the bones on tape, we have the pictures of the bones. And these bones still to this day, two days later, have not been investigated. And to that, you saying that I'm lying?
You didn't say anything new, man. I'll stand by what I've already said.
So for those here, I'm letting everybody here know, we found bones three days ago and we had them on tape and we have not investigated these bones. There's no way that an individual called them unless they had some type of heat sensor on it. They couldn't went to the area that we.
Bro, the look on his face right now, it's like.
Told them to go to because they didn't know where we were. So we're letting everybody know that we found bones.
I'll tell you what, Jafar. I'll tell you what, Jafar. If there's evidence out there that you believe we haven't investigated, there are several of us here tonight. You are welcome to speak to any of us. We will get you somebody there tonight. So if you have evidence on your phone or elsewhere, please let one of us know so that we can have it investigated.
Is there one particular?
You may choose.
Yeah.
You may look.
My best friend. We investigated the bones and the tape that went out there, I want to believe. He actually went to check the bones and they're not. We called at 4:00, 4:00 PM three days ago, they never came. Y'all were there before that, y'all had phones and then they left on the other side. Went to the other side and it's still, it's on camera, us discovering these bones. We're lying.
Can we have the next question, please?
This is the last experience we talked about and this is the.
They're claiming they didn't investigate the bones. He's claiming that they didn't. He said it's been three days. The chief and then this guy here too, also looks like he said that we did look at it. So, I don't know.
I don't even know how to follow up with that one. I just, um, thank y'all. I just saw this on Facebook, so I just came down here. I gotta go pick up my daughter, actually. But one of the questions, and I don't want anybody to be defensive. From what I understand, Mr. Bixby went in voluntarily and things of that nature. But my question is, it's been reported that there was a polygraph test, but there has been no statements as far as what the outcome was with the polygraph test. Is that something that y'all keeping under investigation or is that something we can know about?
It would be inappropriate to comment on the results of that polygraph investigation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The sister made a comment on Facebook stating that supposedly he passed, but I've seen other people stating that they believe he failed, so. But they haven't officially released the results. And thank you to the Cash Apps, Emma, I saw that, thank you so much. Leslie, Medina, Marquita, Leslie, I missed you, your other one. Thank you for that, appreciate it. And the new members as well. Billy Jones, being a member for five months, you're awesome, thank you. Just saying, thank you for becoming a member. Delana, thank you for the members chat, thanks for all you do, we appreciate you. Tactically, that's how you say it. Thank you for becoming a member. And Sinner, thank you for being a level two, level two support, appreciate it.
My name is Ruth McIntosh and I live in the community. My question is, I live in a senior building on Woodlands and where the. And I was wondering if there's any way that we could get a little bit more patrol in our area. We have people that's.
Step up to Michael, they were going down.
We have people that are parking cars there. We have people that come there and sit in the residential parking and, you know, just strange people. We have found people coming inside our building. You can come in the first door, but you have to have a card or key to get in the other part, the main part of the building. People are sleeping in between there. And they are saying, our tech, our manager is telling us that the only security that we can have is that the residents pay for their own security for the building. And I was just wondering, like with me going back tonight by myself, in the area there, we have a lot of dog spots. And people, like I said, people parking in the residential parking. So I was just wondering if there's any way that we could get a little bit more patrol in our area.
Absolutely, man. I'll make sure my team follows up with you. We will certainly help you out.
Okay, thank you so much.
See if I can switch the feed to this one for now. Forty-eight, forty-one.
The investigation is.
Any parking, you know? So I was just wondering if there's any way. Okay, thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is Cameron Lakey. My question to you, not a question, well, it's a question, but I wanted you to back up because you said something that didn't kind of make sense to me. You said that Cody hasn't been seen by anyone, is what you said, since December? Since when?
No, ma'am. So what we're still investigating is exactly when he was seen most recently. We don't know. The information that we got goes back pretty far in terms of when somebody says to us, I saw him and this is where it was.
So no neighbor, no school, no daycare?
Correct.
Family who's, you know, participating, have seen or heard?
Several, several months.
Several months.
No neighbor?
Correct. Now, there are a number of people who said they've seen children. The sort of report about they've seen something, but they're not sure if it's, you know, there are four kids in that house. We haven't spoken to anybody that has seen four year old Cody Bayley in months.
I'm having a difficult time with that because where we live, there's a family, they're house down from us. And the kids come out and play. And I can tell you, I may not know their names, but I know the individual kids. Do you tell me in that community, community, no one can tell you when that's when he's seen?
Correct.
I have one last question from the chief on Facebook. They want to know, do Kansas Police Department think baby Cody is still alive?
You know, that is a, frankly, a hard question. I don't know what happened to him. I'm not willing to sit here and say he's not alive. I'm not willing to guess and say. We will continue to follow the evidence. You know, there are people that, we see the comments. They know he's going on. No, we don't know. We don't know. We've said what we know. We, I don't, we don't have a secret cache of information, but it is a hard question. I think what I said within a couple of weeks stands now. With each passing day, it becomes harder and harder to maintain hope that this child is alive. I still feel that way. Every day that passes hurts just a little bit more and you feel just a little bit less hope.
Sorry. Hi. My name is Mahakani Walden and I just want to say that firstly, I don't have a problem with law enforcement. I back the blue. My father worked in law enforcement and my uncle actually broke the color barrier for the police department in Lakewood, Florida, in Polk County in the 60s. Enrose to the rank of detective. But you said earlier that you feel that there isn't a disconnect and I feel that there is. I feel like your attitude is the disconnect. When I was in college in Norfolk for my undergraduate degree at Norfolk State in 2014, forgive me, getting a little riled up. Chief Goldsmith at the time would regularly meet with young community activists. And 2014, he actually sat down with me because I wanted to plan an event just to do something like this, get the community and students and the chief to sit down and talk about the incidents that happened in Missouri where Mike Brown was shot by police. And when I tell you that Chief Goldsmith, I could reach out to him whenever he supported the community. He was very community minded. I remember him coming to community events, cookouts, all kinds of things that we had. I'm not kidding that you don't do that because I know that you do a lot in the community. But I would hope for you to be working out of the chief community building, the building name after a chief that was very community minded. It's disappointing that he has such a arrogant and rude attitude when it comes to speaking to young leaders like myself and Jafar Jones. When you said at the city council meeting at the beginning of this month that you were creating a sideshow out of this and, yeah, I think the disconnect is your attitude.
Thank you.
Bruh, I don't know that I could do it. I mean, I don't think a lot of chiefs are going to be doing this over and over and over and over again. And I guess they have nowhere else to take out their feelings and frustration, so it's just going to be on him. And he's been very communicative, at least. And also, as far as the attitude thing, it doesn't have to go both ways, right? I don't know. If somebody's doing all kinds of ish to you, and then when you snap back or you say something back, then what, you're, you're the, you know, now the other person's the victim, the one that was originally doing it? Like somebody says, shut the F up, F you motherfucker. No, you shut up. Oh, how dare you be rude? How dare you? That's so disrespectful. Cancelled.
Been here, it's not easy here at time. I've been very supportive of police departments since I've been here. I'm a community person. One thing that I wanted to do, have at this meeting tonight and partnership with the chief, was to try to bring the community together. Because one of the things that I think.
You ever had somebody like that? Being all crazy and nutty, you know, a relationship, maybe a friend, and then you finally say something, they're like, how dare you? Are you kidding me? Been doing this shit forever. What?
No, I mean, I understand that it was referenced here tonight by the young lady that's sitting here is that we can't correct mistakes. There's been some things that's been done, but we need to focus on the finding and the solution. And we can do that by taking the eyes off of the negative part of it. I'm on being activist. I believe in, but I ask the chief some hard questions. But I want to say this, I think it's important that when you get a new chief, it takes time for him to learn us, takes time for him to learn the landscape and it takes time for us to learn him. And so I had followed the chief. I went down to his office, I sat down and I talked to him, I called him, I was proper channels, I scheduled a meeting and we had a chance to chit chat. My security team is here tonight, I took them with me. My wife has been frantic. I rode past the command post tonight, that it was pouring down rain. She wanted to search. She wanted to go out and they said they wanted to go out. And so chief, one of the things I didn't understand, and then you can kind of explain that, is that when it first happened, my biggest question from my wife was, why can't we go out and search? You know, I think it was put out that you didn't want people, that you didn't want people out at, 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 at. Outset and things like that. So one of the questions that I, that I think needs to be answered is, you know, were y'all doing something that just could not take everybody being out there? And maybe you can answer that question.
Sure. So there's never been any statement that we didn't want others searching. We've supported others searching from the beginning. What we did early on was we had to make decisions about how many searches we could oversee with our resources.
Got to wait and see, Laura.
Mind you, from, from the beginning, we had information from our interviews that gave us a sense of what we needed to do most urgently to find Cody Bixby. And based on that information, there was a number of areas that we needed to check and we were able to check those areas. So we asked for a specific number of searches to come out on a number of occasions, but we never limited the folks that could go out. And still to this day, we haven't discouraged anybody from searching. Because the fact is, as long as we don't know, there are places potentially to look. And we recognize the limitations of our capacity. One, and thank you mayor for pointing out, the reason why I've been on TV over and over and over again is so the city of Hampton knows what's happening. This has become a high profile investigation because I've chosen to speak a lot about this issue. None of you have heard me speak a lot about any other issue. I don't, I don't just get on, get in front of the camera, get in front of the camera. This was part of our strategy. I knew to create a video would be to grab attention. I also knew that right now I could call the town hall meeting with the assistance of Pastor King and I could get more people to come out than I could otherwise get to come out. I promise you, we wouldn't have half the people here had you not been in the midst of Cody Bayley. I fought through, I've fought through every step of the way, what we need to do to find this child. And I fully understand that some people thought because we said, you can't search with us or we don't have the space for you to search with us, some people thought we were saying, don't search at all. Maybe we could have communicated more effectively around those issues in the early days that certainly a lesson that we can take moving forward. But we've never limited the number of people. We've never limited where people can go, but we don't have any restricted areas. We simply have areas that we've checked and rejected.
So, Sister Walden, I think that was your name, Jafar. Let me, let me set the table for a new beginning, for communication between the police department and our happiness in the community. Let's work together. Let's pull our resources, our time and our energy together and maybe get to know each other a little better so that we can make better decisions about what to say and what to do.
How can we do that if he ignores us? We literally, we had a great conversation, we had several meetings prior to January 31st. So what are we supposed to do when he actually ignores us? The calls and the texts? I still have the call logs and texts and he ignores us.
And Pastor King, that's fine. If we can get an apology, I would love to work with the chief.
Thank you. And so.
A formal written apology to my home address.
He just called me delusional, like seriously, in your church. And they called me a liar in your church.
So Pastor King, if I may just say briefly, we work with anyone, including activists. we, we work with anyone, including activists. If you allege that a police officer is responsible for his disappearance-
Nobody alleged-
It tends to hurt our working relationship.
Nobody alleged that-
It tends to hurt our working relationship. If, 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 if we have people in the community that are actively communicating to the public that we're doing things that we're not doing, that ultimately get away with these types of investigations-
By calling him liar at a public forum?
That is where things start to break down.
He's never alleged those things. We echo what the community has said and said that these were alleged theories. Never said that.
Sister Walden, Sister Walden, can we have the comments? Let him finish and then you can speak your piece. Okay. That's part of, part of the problem is that we have to give respect where we want respect. If someone's talking, two people talking at the same time, you gotta have somebody who will listen to it. And so, you know, I, I brought this forum together in hopes of the chief, uh, blessing that whatever is going on in the community, at least at the start tonight, to be a new approach. I, I sit on the C P, which is accountability board. I'm one of the members on that board. Chief knows my heart. He knows I'm going to put this feet to the fire, but there's a level of respect gotta give to the office that he sets there as chief of police of the city. Now, I watch from the sidelines. The, the mayor just said he doesn't do interviews. I understand that, I understand your thought about that. But when people see what I saw on Facebook, where the mayor was trying to go and interview and the derogatory language that was used at that point, did not accomplish anything to help find Cody Bigfoot. All it did was go gas on already burned fire.
Let me see if I get the other angle. Uh, let me see, maybe a front visual.
At the beginning, at least at the start tonight, to be a new approach. I, I sit on the, the C P, which is accountability board. I'm one of the members on that board. Chief knows my heart. He knows I'm going to put this feet to the fire, but there's a level of respect gotta give to the office that he sets there as chief of police of the city. Now, I watch from the sidelines. The, the mayor just said he doesn't do interviews. I understand that, I understand your thought about that. But when people see what I saw on Facebook, where the mayor was trying to go and interview and the derogatory language that was used at that point-
Absolutely.
Did not accomplish anything to help find Cody Bigfoot.
Yeah, they wanted an, an, uh, an apology letter from him, huh? From the chief? Like a written apology?
Yes. All it did was go gas on already burned fire. And we have to be very truthful. We have to be very diplomatic about how we, how we approach situations. Some people may say, you know, Pastor, you, you don't understand. I do, I have children on my own. I have a wife that I live with, is very, she used to be a foster parent, so she is. That I'm about to lose children. I want the community to rally around the family, around the police chief, around the mayor and around each other so that we might find some redemption for this problem. Because if we continue to fight, if we continue to be divisive, then none of this is going to be accomplished. And so, there has to be a level of calm that is brought to the table so that there can be conversations. I would, I would do because I'm, I'm a very good woman, y'all. But this year, my atmosphere, this, this, this place is hobbled. And in this place, I'll, uh, set the tone because I'm the leader. And what I've made for my leaders is the same straight that I gave to the chief. And I, I don't do anything for anybody in the community. I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. I think there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done, but tonight's forum is not about shook, pointing the finger and giving blame. Tonight's forum is about information. If you have a question and you want real information and you hear it from the horse's mouth, you know, you ask anything you want to. You don't have to be about a funny group, it doesn't have to be about, uh, the case. It can be about anything that's going on in the city. We're so deeply focused on one thing. We got shootings going on and I know the hood in every corner. And I'm a straight shooter. If we're gonna wrong the cost of police officers, y'all, we're all people. What we gonna do when they shoot knocking people in the-
Thank you for the likes, guys. Appreciate that. Thank you.
The community that we live in. We need your mark, we need your mark for that too. So let's not leave a killer tonight. And if you got any questions, I want to hear sayings. We don't have enough sayings tonight. If you don't have a legitimate question, sit back.
Who?
I don't want, no more sayings. No more talking. Too many people have been making this a sideshow, making all of this stuff. None of it makes, makes, makes a difference. We cannot continue to just point the finger. There's more to stay here than a young boy born at four years old that's been missing since January 31st. And throwing rocks at each other is not gonna stop the problem. So here it is. If you don't have a question, sit back. I don't want to hear no more sayings.
Hmm.
So if you got a question, one question, ask your question and then sit back.
Hmm. Damn.
Um, the Bible says just not yet to be judged just in the Bible's part of this. Um, and so the mayor is already saying that interview-
Wait a minute, sir. We were, we were asking-
Hold on. I asked you, do you have a question? This is, this is, I'm trying to get to it.
No, no. This, I'm trying to get out of the bush. Get to the question. What is your question?
I'm trying to get to it. Are you done? Thanks.
So how do you, how do you- I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Oh, what?
How do you, I can tell you, tell you out of my territory. And you sit there and you're like, "Please." Get out.
Don't put your hand in my face.
Get out, pastor. Get out. Get out.
Oh, no.
Go.
Oh, no.
Sir, please leave. You may not have to leave on my way.
Kicked off the church.
Question. No, I have a question. Chief Howard, you mentioned that-
Oh, no. He said you thought too.
You mentioned that people were saying that the police, uh, we made some sort of assumption. This is the same pastor y'all know that used to inbox me talking about I look like a goddess.
So she said that this is the same pastor that used to email me and say I look like a goddess. I don't know, bro.
Tell him, go ahead.
Uh-uh, yeah, you need to go.
How do you leave?
Take that out.
You need to go.
Take that out.
You need to stop. You're lying in the church. All the way out. In the church.
You look like a goddess. Joshua King, is this not you? Is this not him? Is this not your husband?
No, that's not my husband, sweetheart. There's another person that's-
Look, look, hold on. No, 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 no.
Oh, no, she did. What a mess. Yo, I hadn't, I knew the guy was getting kicked out, but all this goddess stuff and her walking up to the wife? Oh, my God. Oh, and imagine if the pastor was white. Oof, it'd be a wrap. Ooh, it'd be cancelled.
No, because we use the mercy of God. We have a lazy people.
Sweetheart, I would love for that to be, but that's not.
No.
Look, that's you. That's you.
Oh, the church, the church, uh, they confiscated her phone now.
No, ma'am. We need to get him on the phone.
Oh. Oh, no.
If you make your questions, inbox them, we'll make sure you know.
Please, he made the event.
Damn, she said you guys don't ever get anything solved. They're talking about the group of people, the, I guess, the BLM and that lady. What a mess. Oh, my God. I guess she was holding that as ammunition for the pastor?
This, this is why, this is why I had this meeting because I'm a straight shooter and if we don't come together with him, quit focusing on the negative side of our vision, what we disagree on, when we're most of the issues that we have in the city. I'm, I'm about the people of the town to come together. I don't care what's going on, what's happening on, I don't care what's happening on. Bottom line is that there's a four-year-old who witnessed this and the shooting is going on in our neighborhood. The people, while they're waiting in houses, if we wanna fight and terror, then we should be trying to come together and figure out what the issue is.
That's right.
What is the real issue? It's not just Chief's job to find Cody Bigfoot, it's all of our jobs.
I wonder if they posted that whole thing with the, pastor's probably in trouble. It seemed like she had his Facebook profile and she pulled up the Facebook profile and everything. I don't know. But he might be in trouble with the wife. If it's true.
Chief's job to keep guns out of our community is not a job. If the community, and all of these say it, if the community refuses to give us information, how can you fight?
That's right.
That's right.
That's right.
If the people that say they love you the most won't talk, then how is the police going to do their job? We have, we have city officials here tonight. We got Steve Bond this year. We got Jason Sanders that was here tonight. We got that other official that I'm here. I'm not a politician, I'm a pastor. And one thing about my father in the ministry told me, he said, "You can't keep people from talking, but you can keep what we're talking about from each other." I know who I am. I don't have to answer you. So you got a little question. What do you think of the city? Chief, I'm even a believer in my, 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 uh, company here. I'm right here at the interstate. I got people that's running down County Street. Nine mile an hour.
I'll take a little spot.
I have three church people that are passing by right at the corner and there is another gun opposite. Some of them got a radar on this road or something because they come off that highway, hit the bullet go and hit this side street right here. Speaking of, I think it's thirty, twenty mile, thirty mile, they got the guns going out.
And don't hear it.
Somebody made a comment on Facebook, "The entire search for Cody is becoming a sideshow, but so many are out there in and day out looking for this babe with no real understanding of what's going on in the case." This past weekend between the church pastor, the pastor's wife, BLM757, and the people at the new house, Lord. Oh, we gotta take a look at it too. I think there's video of people. Maybe somebody could message me or tell me in the chat. There's some video we're gonna take a look at, people at the house or some, something happened. I don't know what happened. There's more drama. More drama, we're gonna take a look at it. Um, I don't know. We'll keep watching this. I don't know if there's anything else that he said.
I just want that one out there. So if anybody else has a legitimate question about something that's going on in the community, you want to answer to it, now's the time. You're coming to this microphone, you know, so I took it off.
Thank you. He revoked their microphone, man. Snatched it.
Good evening. My name is Willie Thomas. First of all, I'm apologizing, uh, because that is what our community is about. Like, if we don't come together, we need to come together as human beings. Um, I have two mentors here and that's what I don't like for them to see.
Yes, that's right.
For one, because I don't want them to think that, hey, the police are bad guys. And I don't want them to think that, hey, if you protest, there's a way to protest.
That's right.
Protest respectfully, protest rightly.
Cancelled.
And don't go against your, your own people, not even your own people, human beings. You know, um-
No, I'm trying to ask, what, what's your question?
How can we get our youth, uh, more involved with your police community?
Somebody said, "How come BLM wants to attack police chief and Hampton PD, but want to put the same pressure on the family of little Cody? Y'all worried about the pastor's lives when Cody's life should be the only concern and the only people with answers is the family." Ooh. There's somebody on the Facebook group, um, that's saying, "Why don't you put the same pressure on the family? Where's the questions, the protests, the microphone, megaphones, this, ah, 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 you know, outside of the house? What's all that?" What are they saying?
Thank you, thank you for your question. It's a, it's a good question. I, I think a good start is what you did tonight to bring them out to events like this. I think a lot of times we let kids stay home. I think they, they need to be, you know, not, they didn't need to be exposed to all of it, frankly, but they, they, they need to be exposed to the important issues that are happening in their community. I think it's important for kids to feel free to introduce themselves to police officers, to, uh, bring them to us, let us shake their hands and that sort of thing. We're, we're out in the community very often. There's lots of opportunities to do that. I think we need to avoid some of the things that we habitually do, like tell our kids, "If you keep doing that, I'm calling the cops." If, we would all, in policing, really appreciate this stuff and, and, because we, we will not dis- I, I tell kids when I, when I hear parents do that, "Yeah, I'm taking you to Disneyland, don't matter." I'm, I'm not accepting that narrative of, of we're running this one again. But I think, uh, exposing them to us, making us familiar faces to them and vice versa. And, you know, let's start tonight with the kids that you have with you. We love, love to meet them.
I have another question for the community. Okay, I'm sorry.
I wonder if he came out with a nice message tonight or that night?
As you can see, he was not playing no game here, but I was listening, um, in my car. So I felt compelled to come. Uh, I want to start with, you know, I understand that the behavior that I walked in on was not appropriate. I also understand that the way this town hall started didn't feel appropriate because I feel like the blame was passed on the people when we are community. No, we are, we are not, we are people. We are no longer community. Nobody is community anymore. And that's what's missing because we aren't community, okay? Um, we're people. Everybody's an individual now. So we're no longer families, we're no longer communities. And I feel like when you come out and you make a statement that reflects that the blame is on everyone as a whole, it is not a welcome statement. I feel like if you want to change the narrative, you have to change the narrative. You can't pass that along to us because we don't have that voice. We can't get in front of everybody regularly, only when these town halls happen. Now, um, and it's not even, I think, I really came for Cody. Now, um, and it's not even, I think, I really came for Cody because I've been out here since day one. And, um, I don't speak up, I don't get the moves, I don't media, I don't do anything. Because that's not what this is about. It's not. It's about this child that's missing. It's about Esther and how he don't do this again. It's also about open communication and transparency and that's missing. Because I feel I don't feel anyway about police interacting. I'm in school for criminal justice. I'm doing all of this, right? So I respect from the bottom to the top, but it has to be mutual respect. It has to go both ways. If I walk into your presence and I don't feel respected, I'm not giving that back because that's not what I feel. Um, and that goes for anybody. I feel like people are like that in general. Um, and.
Do you have a question? Can you ask your question?
Oh, yeah. I want to know. I want to know. Okay, so I found Cody's dad here or whoever he got because it's not that any, um, anyone said anybody, it was whoever he got. I found that. The detective I talked to that day told me that the whole area I searched was not in you guys' red circle. That when you left out of his house to the left, and I'm gonna put that out there because that's not my place.
What is your question?
I want to know why wasn't that area searched? Why, why weren't you guys taken to the water? That's my first question. My second question is.
We did search, we did search. We, we searched everywhere that was within the vicinity of, of where he was last reported to be.
Okay, so when the detective came out to his neighborhood and he said, "We were not aware this shit was here, we did a grid search and it went this way." I just want to know that he left on his face.
I, 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 I wasn't there. I'm, I'm not even sure what detective.
I want, I want also to know why you weren't there because I waited four hours.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm the police chief, so I can't be at every search.
I understand that, but like you said, this is high profile. It's a four-year-old missing. And he's not the only one, but it's a four-year-old missing. And this happened a day after you realized that you guys had, um, not, not, um, respected the right of his body. So if this happened a day after you knew the case had kind of messed up, why didn't you come to make sure that they were done correctly? When they arrived there with no bag and no police to take it back yet? I just want to know.
Miss, there, there are approximately 450 people who work for the Hampton Police Division. I can't possibly be at every location. It's, it's up to me to, to lead the entire organization and make this.
I'm even surprised that some of these people have his text, like his phone number to text him and stuff like that. I barely have time to talk to every single person and do all these pressers and all that kind of stuff. I'm surprised sometimes with all that. They have a lot of ways to access him, I guess.
Decisions about when I need to be at different places. I'm, I'm, I'm really comfortable with the work that was done around the searches. There's been no fact that it fed back to me to make me think that the integrity of any of our searches isn't what it needs to be.
So, okay, my last question. So the integrity of the interrogation is compromised, but not the integrity of the search?
Correct, correct.
So they can, you can trust them to not ask questions, but you can't trust them to search, right?
Is, is that a question?
Yeah, you can trust, you can not trust your people to ask questions, but you can trust that they searched.
Miss, have you ever made a mistake in your life?
I have, but I feel like that's when you, as a chief, should have been there that next day, you know? Because they made mistakes, sir, big ones. And your detective stepped down his car for an hour asking questions and informing that they didn't go over there. So I just want to know, since the integrity was compromised, why wasn't it followed through to make sure that that didn't happen again? Because I feel like the integrity was compromised again. But I'm just going to leave it at that. I'm just saying what I had to say and maybe we can bring community back into the community.
Not surprising. Imagine all the text messages he must be getting. So you think you're saying people should have his personal phone number and just call him all night long and send a bunch of messages all day long? Damn, I don't know it was like that. A lot of text messages.
Um, it's me again. Um, I want to let my Facebook platform know this is a town hall meeting where they are having open discussion about baby Cody. But also it's town hall meeting where they're discussing everything that's going on in the city of Hampton, Virginia. So my question to the chief is, um, with the shooting they had in Hampton, Virginia at the recreation center? Whenever we have town hall meetings or city hall meetings, if we don't do enough, why? Do you really think that we really can get our youth to come back and go to gyms again, like? Wouldn't we say to open up gyms? Everybody wants people to open up gyms, but we just had two or three kids shot in a gym. Do you think the kids that we have now will be able to gather, to gather in a gym setting like we used to as kids? Do you think that'd be a safe program for our kids, put them in gyms with so many of them happy guys?
Thank, thank you for your question. I, I, I think that we have a responsibility to create spaces that are safe for kids to gather, to go and play. If the kids can't come out to play basketball or soccer or football or whatever it is that they want to play, they can't do that safely. We are lost. So, so it is up to us to create these opportunities to make them safe, to do what needs to be done so that those types of events and programs can sustain themselves. Uh, we have to decide that we're going to do it. We have to follow through.
Um, I will have all my time Monday, but today we spent about, um, eight and a half hours pretty much. Um, just talking about those concerns about safety in our city, about the youth, about having or creating a safe, healthy home.
I think I'm gonna move it on because I have to head out soon. I want to show you some messages in this other video. Just kind of skip a little bit.
Um, good evening, my name is, um, Jamie Rude, I'm in Hampton, I seen you with him. And, uh, I do have a question of my first question I wanted to, I don't know if the community realizes about that human trafficking is also prevalent in our area. And I was just wondering, is, uh, do you know that hamsters, are human trafficking, are they a part of this investigation? Are they?
So, so we, we have, uh, members of our organization that specialize in human trafficking and they're, they're under the umbrella of the work that we're doing here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Our community.
Okay, so I want to move on from that. The link to her video is in the description as well as the other one too from BLM if you wanted to see that. Let me show you some other things, um, so we can follow with this. There's a bunch of stories that I want to update. Um, and yeah, it's kind of unfortunate. It seems like the town halls are kind of like almost running its course. You know, there's just not really new information. Um, this was posted by Legacy on the 26, two days ago, and this is with regards to uh, the sister, I think. Yeah, the sister made some posts. Um, says here, the caption is Cory Bigsby felt the need to explain herself. Oh, sister, maybe. Um. "The FBI aren't the ones putting out misleading info out. It's the HPD. I can be relaxed because God created me this way and because I don't have anything to prove to the public." People always speak out. My bad. "People always speak on what they would or wouldn't do until certain types of situations knock on their door. This is my life, my nephew's life, my family's life, and so no one outside can say what we feel or don't feel. Honestly, I don't know what happened to Cody or where he may be. What I do know is Cody has opened the door before and walked out." So that part wasn't surprising. So she's claiming Cody's done this before. It says here, "Honestly, I don't know what happened to Cody. What I do know is he's opened the door before and walked out, so that part wasn't surprising to me." The worst, the part that worries me the most is if he's safe, wherever he is. The area alone is a hotspot for trafficking, something that HPD isn't speaking on. And the neighborhood directly adjacent has multiple residents who are on the registered offender registry, which we've spoken about. Well, they, they spoke about it on the presser, but also that's one of the first things people do, not just police, but people in general, like true crime that are, they just, you know, somebody goes missing or some sort of crime happens, people look into the, well, who's in the area that's on the, uh, registry? So at this point, those are my concerns. She goes on to say, "The chief tonight basically said Cody hasn't been seen in months and he pointed at the family members for failing the kids. The kids weren't going to school or daycare. He implied this could have been avoided if only his family would have been forthcoming. Well, sadly, I didn't hear that part and know Cody, and know Cody was not in school, so blame his mom for refusing to send his dad the important documents he needed when he reached out to her numerous times." She goes on to say, "So let me say this. I don't owe you or anyone else any explanations. One thing I know is the chief and all the rest of them at this point have full knowledge of the interactions or the lack thereof of dialogue between the parents of Cody." That was kind of that. Also wanted to show, that was from Legacy. This was on, let's see, I want to know what was happening over here in front of somebody's house. I don't know if this is what people are talking about. People are saying that Cody Bigsby's family is being harassed? Take a look at this. "Trigger warning, full 14 minutes of harassment and threats. This is disgusting. A narrative that Hampton Police and the mainstream media have put out has become dangerous to Cody's family." So supposedly, I don't know, we're gonna see what's going on. Supposedly the family was getting threats for his new house. "This is the direct result of the words of the chief at the town hall harassing Cody Bigsby's family. This is ridiculous. These individuals have overstepped their boundaries, making threats towards them."
Stuff in the new spot? Yeah. We out here.
Uh-oh.
We out here. They just left. They just left Rentalit, the old house. Now they moving the stuff into the new house on Burn Street.
That's what he talking about? Oh.
Can y'all just ask, do y'all have, do y'all know where Cody at? Do y'all know where Cody at? Do any of y'all know where Cody at?
Uh-oh.
Where's baby Cody?
Uh-oh.
Where's baby Cody?
They're moving dad's stuff in.
A whole nother U-Haul. They moving stuff from the old house to this house. Do y'all know where baby Cody is? This is his dad's family. They don't want to answer no questions. They flicked us off, they talk shit to us. We just want to know where Cody at. We be out here in the cold rain, freezing temperatures, looking for their nephew. Their, their baby. Come on, hop, hop on my lap, y'all. And they still got to go back to the old place and get more stuff and bring it back to this new place. Where's baby Cody? That's the one that flicked us off and gathered her truck, gathered his truck. Y'all need help putting the stuff in the new house? We might come crawl some of the stuff from your missing nephew that y'all don't give a fuck about. Y'all nephew missing, but we out here looking for him and y'all don't give two fucks. Four-year-old just vanished. How? Make it make sense. All of them, the whole family weird. And her right there, she better keep something in her hand because Pootie gonna get her ass.
Who's Pootie? Who's Pootie?
Stand back, Pootie, stand back.
What's the saying? Uh, stand back and stand by?
Stand back, Pootie.
Uh-oh.
Ain't no telling, it's incest in his family. They all fucking weird. How y'all moving something in a fucking four-year-old missing? Y'all nephew missing. Y'all, y'all a part of it. Y'all a part of his disappearance.
Oh, shit. Stand back, stand by.
Don't give a fuck.
I wanted to make a shirt like that, but a friend advised me I shouldn't.
About that baby? That sister was walking with us, passing out the flyers so she made sure we don't fucking go in the right fucking direction.
Yeah, I want to know.
And her ass over here now moving shit. But this bitch right here with this blind pony, this bitch right here? I think that's the, that thing, that's the girlfriend. All of them got something to do with his disappearance. All of them.
Pretty thick.
They don't have nothing to say, nothing.
All right, I better put this on headphones if you got kids or whatever. Holy crap.
Alone. Where was y'all when they was being left alone?
Wow.
My God, brother mama crazy. Call the law. That's the only way. We gonna leave. Call the motherfucking police and I don't think y'all want to deal with them no more. Look at them. Look at them. We doing this for y'all nephew. Y'all ain't doing shit but smiling and laughing.
So they're saying this is the chief's fault now? What do you guys think? They say the, um, BLM saying that the chief caused this.
Her right there, her. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Blind haired bitch. Then they even got this old lady out here. Ain't no telling who she is. Lord forgive me. He couldn't get none, none, none of these people's here but Cody were missing or they was all a part of it.
Hmm, yeah, true, right. Another U-Haul. I guess another U-Haul. I, I wonder if that U-Haul's still in that neighborhood, the other one, or is this the same one that they moved from there to here? Or did that other U-Haul go back? Is this a brand new one or the same one or what? Or what?
Oh, we don't mean no disrespect to our elders. We just want to know where Cody at. We just want to know where Cody at. We respect our elders. The sister, oh, her right there. Most definitely her. What's your name? I'm gonna stick my dog on you bitch. He gonna be moving again. Y'all ain't gonna last long around here.
Thank you, Rheta.
Y'all ain't gonna last long around here.
Yeah, I didn't know all this was gonna happen.
Huh, all they answer. They know where he at. They know where he at. He either dead or at somebody fucking house. Where he at, auntie? You said he was alive?
Oh, that's, that's the sister?
It's irrelevant. She said it was irrelevant the last time she seen her nephew. She said it was irrelevant. That's what she saying.
Man, they come together for that goddamn money. Y'all need that nigga money, don't you?
The breadwinner.
Couldn't get a motherfucking baby sorted out. Where your husband at? He was the last one to-
Yeah, where the ex-husband at? He was the last one to talk to. Where he at? Talandia, Talane, whatever the fuck Butler. Tendalee, Tangerine, whatever it is. The fuck? Where that husband at? Where that ex at? Damn. Man, I'm about to get off of this because I'm shaking. They not gonna say nothing. And I ain't gonna keep yelling that, look how they put no trespasses aside or- No trespasses aside in the window and every goddamn thing they-
And who's moving in there? Are they just moving the dad's stuff or is the family going to take on the new home? Dad's home? Oh, we got a nice new home here. Is the family moving in too? Like the, who's moving in there? Is it just moving dad's stuff? I wonder. They're gonna be watching him 24/7.
Exactly, James. Where the fuck he at? We thinking about coming to DC to check these addresses where he used to live at.
Uh-oh.
Somebody knows something. And the aunt that's over there said he was alive and healthy, but she out here searching grounds with us. Make it make sense, bitch. I'm shaking, y'all. I'm shaking. I ain't even cold. I'm just fucking shaking.
That, that is still locked up to my knowledge, but they're supposed to be, the bond thing got rescheduled or something like that. So we're waiting for a new date. The attorney needs to look at more video and stuff like that.
This shit is sickening. And they over there just standing there. It don't matter. They, and guess what? We bout to meet, we bout to meet them right back. We bout to meet them right back at the townhouse so they get the other load. Everywhere they go, we gonna go. They not gonna be here without being miserable. Cody wasn't protected, so why the fuck should your brother be protected?
Y'all bitches definitely ain't protected by-
I know that's right. Y'all laughing. How can y'all laughing? Your fucking, your nephew missing. Your, your nephew missing, bitch, and you laughing? You laughing? My family in DC too. My family in DC too. Southeast, northeast, all that good shit. The fuck? And I'd have spread it y'all pictures everywhere I could.
Yeah, they pissed.
These sisters ass bastards. Don't give a fuck about that baby. Boots on the ground, bitches.
Damn. Boots on the ground.
We fucking lose sleep. We fucking don't eat right. Out here looking and searching for the damn baby while y'all out here smiling and laughing like y'all nephew ain't missing. Make what? My heart racing at every fucking thing, man.
I don't think they're a part of BLM 757. He's, looks like he's speaking out against this, saying that they shouldn't be going after the family.
All the, it's crazy though. All the, all the, all the flyers we posted up, Pembroke are gone. Yep. Let me go post these pictures. Man, that shit my car all the way over there. Y'all, I'm so, so upset. I'm shaking.
I want to see her Facebook profile. I want to see what she, what other videos, what she got going on.
These bitches laughing.
Oh, man.
They laughing at us. They can't be laughing at us. Cause we serious. They even got the grandma, whoever, uh, uh, who, whoever it is. I mean, y'all actually, no remorse. All y'all going, all y'all gonna get something. Something gonna happen to y'all. The Lord gonna fix y'all. And we out here walking through marsh, ditches, trees getting poked by stickabuzz bushes, looking for their nephew, her nephew.
Thank you, Retta. I think I just got it. Uh, let me see. Thank you for the cash app. I got a text. "Thank you," uh, she says, "just for keeping it real for us. Love you." Love you too. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Retta is the most prolific video, has the most prolific video of sister. Yeah, she does. If it's the one where they're outside of the courthouse, yeah.
The bitch that said he was alive, but then out here on foot looking for him with us, but he alive. She said it out her mouth. He alive. Don't trip. Don't trip. Don't trip.
Okay. How about tomorrow?
We are too. The fuck? Like you saying something. Man, we a squad up out this bitch so goddamn fast. It'll be a group here and a group out the townhome. The fuck is you saying?
Yo, you say I want to-
No, she went to get the, um, flyers in her pants. Talk about intimidation, bitch. Ain't nobody trying to intimidate you. We trying to get you and your brother to say where the baby at.
Where's the woman in the past? Or does she, is that text?
You call him Daja. We ain't going nowhere. Officer right there. We right here. We ain't going nowhere.
Oh, somebody actually recorded the whole, now I see the video.
We're right here to post our Cody flyers. We got flyers. We bout to post them. Come on. That's it. We ain't going nowhere. The police show-
Jesus Christ, what a mess.
Cars, cars. He our friend. We posting pictures of Cody. They called the police on us. Look, I'll talk about where y'all going now. Where y'all going now? Talk about you and intimidate me.
BLM saying, uh, we're harassing Cody's family, father's side. Pootie, yeah, where's Pootie at? Who's Pootie?
Peace and power. I won't be before y'all long. Um, just some, uh, some very, very unacceptable inspired. And, and, um, we got to shed light on this very delicate situation, um, in the best way that possible, but uh, it's some, you know, some very, very serious things that transpired over the last few hours. And we just want to do our part and do diligence and try and diffuse these situations. Um, so I said, I was, you know, trying to say before, uh, it, it, it did the buffer that we just have to address a very si- serious situation. I won't be before y'all long, but, um, some indivi- you know, some individuals took it upon themselves and really went to these individuals' houses harassing them and making threats, and that's completely unacceptable. Um, and the thing about that is too, is like this is a record that the law enforcement has put out there and that the news media has put out there. Y'all are going off of things that they're saying and it has literally become dangerous for this family. Like y'all were coming out harassing this-
Same thing I was talking about earlier. Guys, this is out of line. I just got to let you guys know behaving like this in public is, uh, is not becoming. Uh, I guess, I guess that's it. I did find you another original video. Somebody was there recording the town hall as well. If somebody needs that, I guess I could send it some other time. So I didn't see that before. Um, let's see if there's anything else. I think that's it. Cause I have to head out here. I do want to do some other stuff, man. I do want to do, I don't know, some other stories, some updates and keep following this. Uh, I'm going to see what I do next. Not sure if it's either Justin or Colin and Crystal or Lisa, Nina, there's so many things. But yeah, thank you guys so much for joining this afternoon. I appreciate it. Please hit the like button, turn on the bell notifications, subscribe. And, uh, yeah, and I'll timestamp this in a while. All right. So take care of yourselves. Peace. Peace. Adios.